So those of you who have been with us for the last few weeks know that we're doing some tech upgrades and those are a little touch and go, so we're resetting a few things and we'll start in a few minutes. Thanks for your patience.
I was like, "Buh, my mouth."
Jeffrey Oswald, I live over on Mount Avenue near the Johnson Center. Apparently I'm in Ward 4. I thought I was in 6, but you know, I didn't look close enough at the map, I guess.
I saw, I was over at the Johnson Center yesterday with a group that were feeding people and somebody pulled out this piece of paper and it had all these specifics about the change, the ordinance that they're working on for camping in Missoula. And I gotta say, it's like, wow. It's trying to make, they're not a square inch in the city where people could just sit down and rest if they're the wrong people. If they're not wealthy and they draw attention to police or businessmen and they're tired and they sit down and they get moved on. Or they try to lie down for the night and they get kicked by a cop in the middle of the night. It's not a pleasant thing for anybody and it doesn't have to happen. I'd like to think that there are smart people in Missoula that could come up with some sort of functional thing that didn't treat people like criminals just because they're poor. You know, if they're actual real criminals committing crimes, then the police should be investigating those crimes. But needing to get a night's sleep and not having money to provide that for yourself is not a crime. It's destitution. It's being down and out. And though many of you have never been down and out, chances are with the way the disasters are happening in the world these days, you'll get your chance. And I hope for your sake that there isn't somebody that just tells you you have to go someplace else because your house burned down or you got flooded out or something like that. As far as this, I haven't been really opening the book for this, but there's something I looked at today just before coming down and I think it's applicable. And I don't know where everybody on this council sits as far as this issue. I think that there's some people who want to do good things, but they feel a lot of political pressure and then some people are hard-hearted. "Woe unto them that decree unrighteous decrees and the right grievousness they have prescribed to turn aside the needy from judgment and to take away the right from the poor of my people." Well, I don't expect everybody to be religious and believe the same things as I do. I just say the words and I think they're a lot more powerful than anything I could come up with myself. It's the truth and people should start following the truth instead of the money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment tonight?
Hi, I'm Mary Gray and I'm in Ward 3. Tomorrow is election day. Everybody please remember to go and get your ballot in the elections office hands by 8:00 PM tomorrow. It's open from 7 to 8. There are drop-off points as well. The elections office is at 140 North Reserve, but there are four other drop-off points that may be closer to where you live. Please look at your information that's included in the ballot. There's a little pamphlet that has information on it that tells you exactly where those are. They're also on the elections website. Please make certain to turn in your ballots so that all these lovely people know that you're interested in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? I do have a Mr. Spitzmacher.
You can call me Big K Low Life Montana, Spitzmacher, S-P-I-T-Z-M-A-C-H-E-R. Is that too direct for you? I'm kind of proud of my name as Mr. Spitzmacher and my birth date as far as my first name. Is it federal or state? There's a difference because somebody changed the letter on my birth certificate for somebody's amusement. Somebody didn't like it last week and I'm going to enjoy it to a jury trial thanks to the city. Update on the Pavarello. There are some changes happening. Actually talked to one of the upper staff member in regards to, what's her name? Abby? The putrid choice word, select choice word that says if you come in five minutes to eat, you've got five minutes to eat. You better choke it down like a ravenous hog like I seen once time. That needs to change for somebody that should be listening that's on the board of directors that got no results. But the change of the Pavarello, we got some intelligence staff coming there. They're actually got mental health capabilities. Now my question is how well are they going to be heard and understood when I encourage them to bring
I was looking through some old papers a few days ago. Found two governing papers of the MRA. Now, you may think that says, well, that they're required to operate under those guidelines. You would be wrong. They don't do it, so they must not be required to do it. Perhaps you would ask the city attorney, why the MRA and therefore the city council are permitting all these practices, illegal practices, to be done? One of them is Missoula Redevelopment Agency Program Application Process. It's basically saying anybody who wants to apply for our handouts, I'm sorry, investments, uh, follow these procedures. Number four says staff review. Upon submitting all necessary information, the MRA staff will review the merits of the project and the need for funding. Let me read that again. Will review the merits of the project. For example, a few million dollars to the Stockman Bank, because they need that help. And 10 million to the shopping center. Fifty thousand to the whatever. But it says here, they will review the need for financing. They do not do that. And if the board member that answered my question quite some time ago was correct, she stated that they had never done that. Never looked to see if the applicant needed the financing to do the project. I was dreaming the other day that Stockman Bank was going under because the MRA didn't give them enough money. But we'll keep trying to make sure they get it right now. This other document, Urban Renewal District Three, Tax Increment Financing Criteria for Review. It's got several things in here, but the most significant.
That's three minutes, Mr. Moore.
Okay, let me finish this one.
You're welcome to come back next week and wrap up.
I will. Could I have another minute to read this?
Wrap up your thought. Go ahead.
Fourteen criteria for review.
We don't have time for fourteen criteria.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm just saying there are fourteen. Trying to impress somebody, I guess. Number ten, types of finan-- they're looking at, they're supposed to, the staff of MRA is supposed to be looking at all these functions. Project financing. Types of financing available to the applicant. Lender participation, commitments, industrial development revenue bonds, city fellow grants and so forth are examples. Are examined to assess the need for TIF assistance.
All right, thank you, sir.
Same thing. Is it being done? Is it being done, Mayor?
We don't do it back and forth now. All right, thank you, sir.
Not by you or the--
Any additional general public comment tonight?
Sir. Jeffrey Oswald. I live over on Mount Avenue near the Johnson Center. Apparently, I'm in Ward Four. I thought I was in Six, but, you know, I didn't look close enough at the map, I guess. I saw, I was over at the Johnson Center yesterday with a group that were feeding people. And somebody pulled out this piece of paper and it had all these specifics about the change, the ordinance that they're working on for camping in Missoula. I gotta say, it's like, wow. It's trying to make, they're not a square inch in the city where people could just sit down and rest. If they're the wrong people, if they're not wealthy and they draw attention to police or businessmen and they're tired and they sit down and they get moved on. Or they try to lie down for the night and they get kicked by a cop in the middle of the night. It's not a pleasant thing for anybody and it doesn't have to happen. I'd like to think that there are smart people in Missoula could come up with some sort of functional thing that didn't treat people like criminals just because they're poor. You know? If they're actual real criminals committing crimes, then the police should be investigating those crimes. But needing to get a night's sleep and not having money to provide that for yourself is not a crime. It's destitution. It's, it's being down and out. And though many of you have never been down and out, chances are with the way the disasters are happening in the world these days, you'll get your chance. And I, I hope for your sake that there isn't somebody that just tells you you have to go someplace else because your house burned down. Or, uh, you got flooded out or something like that. But as far as this, uh, I haven't been really opening the book for this, but there's something I looked at today just before coming down. And I think it's applicable and I, I don't know where everybody on this council sits as far as this issue. I think that there's some people who are, want to do good things, but they feel a lot of political pressure. And then some people are hard-hearted. Woe unto them, the decree, unrighteous decrees and the right grievousness they have prescribed to turn aside the needy from judgment and to take away the right from the poor of my people. Well, I don't expect everybody to be religious and, and believe the same things as I do. I just say the words and I think they're a lot more powerful than anything I could come up with myself. It's the truth and--
Mr. Oswald, you're a little over three minutes.
People should start following the truth instead of the money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment tonight?
Hi, I'm Mary Gray and I'm in Ward Three. Tomorrow is Election Day. Everybody, please remember to go and get your ballot in the elections office hands by 8:00 PM tomorrow. It's open from seven to eight. There are drop-off points as well. The elections office is at 140 North Reserve, but there are four other drop-off points that may be closer to where you live. Please look at your information, um, that's included in the ballot. There's a little pamphlet that has information on it that tells you exactly where those are. They're also on the elections website. Please make certain to turn in your ballots so that all these lovely people know that you're interested in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? I do have a, Mr. Spitzmacher.
You can call me Big K Low Life Montana. Spitzmacher, S.P.I.T.C.M.A.C.H.E.R. Is that too direct for you? I'm kind of proud of my name as Mr. Spitzmacher and my birth date as far as my first name. Is it federal or state? There's a difference because somebody changed the letter on my birth certificate for somebody's amusement. Somebody didn't like it last week and I'm going to enjoy it to a jury trial, thanks to the city. Update on the Pavarello. There are some changes happening. Actually talked to one of the upper staff members in regards to, what's her name, Abby? The putrid choice word, select choice word that says if you come in five minutes to eat, you've got five minutes to eat. You better choke it down like a ravenous hog like I seen once time. That needs to change for somebody that should be listening that's on the Board of Directors that got no results. But the change of the Pavarello, we got some intelligent staff coming there. They're actually got mental health capabilities. Now, my question is, how well are they going to be heard and understood when I encourage them to bring forth appropriately? And as far as the ones that threatened me last March 17th, they don't like how they gave me their number. And one of them said something very disregardful. Sounds like Salt Lake City. I'm surprised it's not running around like rampant wildfire like it did in Salt Lake City. If you want to ask anybody about it, ask Chief Brown, the district attorney, Sim Gill, the city attorney and the mayor, or better yet, the minister of the First Methodist Church, Elizabeth, Reverend Elizabeth. I'm surprised the hatefulness isn't as equal to Salt Lake City. But it was well on its way last spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room tonight? I'm seeing no one else in the room. We do have a hand up online. It's a phone number ending in 1655.
Hi, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Travis Matier, 23-year resident. Um, I'm glad someone in council chambers brought a book. I also wanted to bring a book for a visual aid, but I'm just going to have to describe the book to you. It's not the good book, it is a book. Uh, and this book is called To Kill and Kill Again by John Costin. Uh, when he opened this book, there are words in this book and if anyone wanted to, you know, get a copy and read the words, one of the things that was happening back in the seventies was the fact that a serial killer was taking advantage of different jurisdictions, so like Missoula County, then there's a county line, then there's Valley County, uh, you know, to the west of us, there's Mineral County. And so I would just suggest, as I continue hearing about dead bodies, like multiple, like plural dead bodies, and I'm trying to get a sense of like there's data, so I'm making lots of phone calls, showing up in person as I am oftentimes doing. I don't know if the Missoulian reporters do that, but I, I do that. I show up in person and talk directly to people. It's amazing the stuff you learn. And so, um, as I continue to try and raise alarm that I think there's multiple dead bodies and some of those caring people in chambers that really care about the homeless might want to like ask some questions, like are there overdoses happening inside the Johnson Street Shelter, stuff like that? Uh, I want to be one of the few commenters tonight that's going to keep it within three minutes. Um, but I want to thank all the commenters, especially Bob, for taking a lot of time because it allowed me to do breathing techniques that I'm learning in therapy. So have a fun night, everyone, uh, and continue just pretending like we don't have serious violence happening all the time on the streets of Missoula, Montana. I'm told it's everywhere in America, uh, but my kids are growing up in this town. Good night.
Any other general public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. Uh, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings for the week. Ms. Rabine.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. Just a moment here, I want to share my screen so folks can follow along with me while I read out the committee's schedule this week. Folks, tonight, the city council is setting, uh, uh, committee meetings for this coming Wednesday. That's November 8th. Uh, all these meetings are being held in person as well as hybrid mode, in person in city council chambers. And, uh, on the city's website, there is a meetings button on the main page. It'll take you to our agenda portal. And the instructions to join every one of our meetings is on the top of all of our public agendas. Here are our committees for this coming Wednesday. Budget and Finance Committee will meet from 9:30 in the morning to 10:05. They'll be taking up three, uh, items. They'll be taking up the reappointment to the Tourism Business Improvement District, a referral for the fiscal year 2024 Community Justice Department Agreement, uh, and the Land Use and Planning Business License Fee Schedules Resolution. Public Works Mobility follows that meeting from 10:15 in the morning to 12:15 in the afternoon. They'll be taking up a reappointment to the Missoula Urban Transit, Transportation District Board. You might also know that board as the folks who do mountain line. The Professional Services Agreement, uh, with WGM for the California Street Surface Infrastructure Improvements Project from Dakota to River Road is also on the Public Works Mobility Agenda. And there is also an item called the Urban Boundary Change. Folks, this has to do with the transportation planning urban boundary. Um, and so there's a proposal to change the boundaries of that particular transportation planning district. Um, there is going to be an update on the city's street snow and ice control plan. And finally, a comprehensive stormwater quality plan update. Public Safety, Health and Operations meets from 12:45 in the afternoon to 1:10. They'll be taking up, uh, Teamsters Union Local Number Two and the Operators Union Local Number 400 that represents street division employees and these are their collective bargaining agreements. Um, they'll also be taking up amendments to the City-County-Missoula Local Government Building Special District, uh, inner local agreement. The U.S. Justice, uh, Department of Justice Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral, Behavioral Health Response Program update is taking place in Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee. And finally, they will be confirming the mayor's appointment of a new city clerk for the city of Missoula. Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet on this coming Wednesday from 1:20 to 3:35. Be, they'll be taking up a use agreement for the use of Playfair Park facilities and, uh, regar-- a referral regarding the Green Power Program Term Sheet that has to do with the city's 100% Clean Electricity Initiative. Those are our committees this coming Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Rabine. Any changes? Ms. Cheryl?
I just wanted to note that the, um, referral for the Green Power Program will come first in the committee at 1:20. We do have, um, I think people planning on attending, so I wanted to make sure they knew that the Playfair Park Facilities Use Agreement would be second.
Thank you for that. Any additional notes or changes? All right, uh, so the committee's schedule will stand with that, um, change in order. Uh, we can move on to our consent agenda. So items on the consent agenda were generally approved unanimously in city council chambers. And we save a little time on Monday nights by taking those up as a package. Ms. Rabine will read the list aloud and then we'll invite comment before we vote. Ms. Rabine.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. We have six items on tonight's consent agenda. Hang on here. Um, so the first, as always, is to, uh, uh, do the city's accounts payable. This evening, council's being asked to ratify accounts payable for checks that were dated October 31st uh, in the amount of $1,833,617.89. The action tonight is to ratify because last week, the city council did not meet, but we still pay our bills. Uh, number two is to approve accounts payable for checks that are dated tomorrow, November 7th, 2023. Those, uh, claims total 150, excuse me. We, we would love it. It was 158 bucks, but it's $1,528,851.34. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the new four-year collective bargaining agreement with the MFPE Maintenance Technicians, uh, in the Parks and Recreation Department Union. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the new four-year collecting of bargain, bargaining agreement with the MFPE Planners Union, uh, from the Community Development, uh, Planning and Innovation Office. Number five is the first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance. Folks, tonight, city council is setting a public hearing on November 27th, 2023 on an ordinance of the city council generally amending Chapter 2.92 of Missoula Municipal Code entitled Records and Information Governance Program to reflect new state laws and regulations relating to records and information management, adopting records retention schedules issued by the state for use by municipalities to manage records and information and updating duties and responsibilities of city staff to reflect modern best practices. And finally, number six is to suspend city council rule number 21 and set a public hearing on November 13th, 2023 to hold a public hearing on an application from the city of Missoula to vary from Title 20 zoning code use building accessory uses and structure-- eh. From, from Title 20 zoning code, uh, specifically use and building accessory uses and structures and landscaping standards on the Johnson Street Temporary Emergency Shelter Parcel under the state and local law. The council's role is to conduct this public forum and take public comment. Uh, but the council does not have a decision-making role. Uh, this item tonight, because we're suspending city council rules, does require a two-thirds vote of those present and voting. And I think that's tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Rabine. Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Uh, any council discussion? Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind, um, explaining a little bit about 5.6? I know this came up during the budgeting process about the fact that, um, you know, we, there is a way in which we can move away from the rules allowed and this is the way to do that.
Yeah, so within, within, um, the Title 20 zoning code, um, there's a tool for government entities, uh, who are deviating from zoning, um, to make that case. This is a little unique because it's our own project and so council actually does have a decision-making authority unlike, um, say the uni, if it were the university or the county bringing forth a project. But this is the, this is the process under zoning to bring that forward. The reason for suspending the rules is that, um, there was a legislative change that requires us to, to do these public forums within 30 days and we can't get them through our process in 30 days under our current rules. So we, we need to change the rules to, um, update that, but, um, this is, um, in lieu of that, suspending the rules. All right, uh, seeing no additional comment. Ms. Rabine, we can have a roll call vote on the consent agenda, please.
Okay, on items one through six. Uh, Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Harlino.
Yes.
Tontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
DeCica.
Yes.
And West.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote that is 12 eyes and passes unanimously?
Thanks, and the consent agenda is approved. We don't have any comments from city staff for various city entities. Um, we do have a proclamation tonight, um, and this is, "Initiatives Will Continue to Shape Missoula for Better for Decades to Come." "And whereas Mayor Engen believed deeply that all Missoula residents should have the opport, should have opportunities to thrive by making happy and safe lives for themselves and their families, doing meaningful work and following their dreams." "And whereas Mayor Engen understood that a thriving downtown benefits the entire community." "And whereas easy-to-access city and county services were a cornerstone of Mayor Engen's public service ethic." "And whereas Mayor Engen believed that a strong and collaborative relationship between the leaders of Missoula County and the city of Missoula is of great public benefit." "And whereas Mayor Engen and the Board of County Commissioners saw the value, utility, and beauty of revitalizing the historic federal building and worked for a decade to save and repurpose it for public use." "And whereas Mayor Engen was grateful for the equally persistent efforts of his friend and colleague Senator John Tester in the transfer of the building to Missoula local governments." "Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Missoula Mayor Jordan Hess and Missoula County Commissioners Josh Slotnick, Juanita Vero and David Strohmeier hereby proclaim that the name of the Missoula Federal Building shall be from this day forward, the John Engen Local Government Building." "And I want to thank all of the staff at the city and county, uh, who've been working on this project. I want to thank Senator Tester, uh, and the staff at the General Services Administration within the federal government, um, and all of the folks that have gotten us to this point. There's a lot of exciting work underway at that building and, um, a lot of nice, uh, memories and nice words said today, uh, in a ceremony that, that's, um, televised and, and available. Um, and I want to thank all the council members who came to that ceremony. Uh, and just, um, want to continue to, I want to enter into the record one more time, my gratitude for, um, Mayor Engen and what he did for our community over many decades of public service and, uh, the, um, personal mentor that he was for me. We have no items of final consideration. We have one public hearing. This is, uh, on the West End, West End Homes Phase Development Review. And we have Cassie Trippard with our staff report.
Great. Great. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm Cassie Trippard, a planning supervisor in the Community Planning, Development and Innovation Department. Today, I'm presenting staff's report on the phase development review for West End Home Subdivision Phase One. I'll begin with background on the project, then discuss the parameters for a phase development review, and then go through staff's recommended amendments to findings of fact and conditions of approval. West End Home Subdivision is located on two tracks, uh, of land north of Hellgate Elementary School and west of Flynn Lane. The aerial imagery is outdated, but the roadway for England Boulevard is now installed through the subdivision property. To the north is the future Icon Apartment Homes and Sapphire subdivisions. This is the approved master site plan from the preliminary plat approval. The subdivision proposes 260 lots, a 26.72 acre park and three smaller open spaces. The different colors of the lots represent the different zoning districts, which are planned for a mix of detached house and townhouse style development. This phase development review is for Phase One, shown here in orange. Phase One includes 56 lots in the larger, uh, park, or the large park parcel, all access from England Boulevard. The deadline to file the final plat is January 2025. There is a minor change to the phasing plan. Flynn Lane, which runs along the eastern boundary, was previously shown as being improved all in Phase One. The updated phasing plan shows Flynn Lane being improved with each adjacent phase. And I'll dive into the reasoning for this later in the presentation. Phase development review was mandated by state law and requires city council to hold a public hearing and conduct a review prior to the applicant's ability to submit for final plat review. In this review, the goal is to, sorry, the goal is to determine if there are any change subdivision primary review criteria impacts or new information, which would result in significant impacts that were not known at the time of preliminary plat approval. If these circumstances do exist, uh, city council is able to apply new conditions of approval or amend existing conditions. Council may choose to approve the phase development review with some or all of these recommendations. And phase development review cannot be denied. The preliminary plat was approved on January 9th of this year. State and local law just changed, so this process is no longer required for phases platted within five years of preliminary plat approval. However, the subdivision must follow the laws in place at the time it was deemed sufficient for preliminary plat review. So after phase development review, the applicant may submit for final plat approval, which ensures their res, their submittal meets the conditions that resulted from the phase development review process. The city subdivision regulations include review of the following impacts from a proposed subdivision derived from the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act. These are the categories you'll find in the staff report. Staff's recommended amendments all relate to C impacts on local services. West End Home Subdivision was the first subdivision approved in the Swiftup Kane area where some infrastructure is being installed by the Mullen Bill Grant. As time went on, the city refined some of the processes for implementing the bill grant. There is new information impacting findings of fact and conditions of approval, which I'll cover on the following slides. Earlier, I mentioned the minor change to the phasing plan regarding Flynn Lane. Staff sent request for agency comment to other departments and also sent public notice to adjacent property owners. No concerns were expressed from agency staff regarding changed impacts and no public comment has been received. Now, moving on to the new information, the subdivider is proposing to create a lot more park land than is required by the-- the subdivider is proposing to create a lot more parkland than is required by the regulations. The required amount of parkland includes the area used to obtain a density incentive, plus the base parkland dedication requirements, plus the area tied to a development agreement created as part of a variance approval. A condition of approval required the applicant to create two park parcels. One would contain the amount of required parkland, and the other would contain the remainder. Both parcels are proposed to be under city ownership following final plat filing. The applicant provided this information with Phase Development Review, meeting the condition of approval. Open space number four is the required parkland and equals 10.6 acres, and open space five will be 16.1 acres. No conditions of approval need to be amended. Staff proposed amending the findings of fact to account for this information. There are two new pieces of information regarding trails. There were two trails proposed through and adjacent to the subdivision. Trail A was proposed to run through the park. Trail B is proposed to run along Flynn Lane. The loca- location of Trail B on Flynn Lane is not changing. At the time of preliminary plat approval, the city did not have funding for Trail B, and since then, the city has obtained a federal grant for the trail. Since the city is able to pay for the trail with federal funding, staff recommend amending the condition of approval to no longer require the subdivider to install the trail. Because the trail is located on Flynn Lane, the condition stated that all improvements to Flynn Lane must happen with Phase One. Now this is not necessary and would result in infrastructure being torn up with each phase, as well as a lot of temporary blockades along Flynn Lane. Staff propose amending the condition to allow Flynn Lane improvements to occur with each adjacent phase. At Land Use and Planning Committee on October 25th, council asked if the developer installed the trail. Uh, could we use the grant money for something else? The original plan was never to have the subdivider fund the trail. Previously, the trail was going to be paid for using impact fees. This was documented in an agreement that covered funding for improvements through the Mullen Build Project in exchange for donated right-of-way. Since this is the first development in the area, there are not currently impact fees available. The subdivider was going to install the trail and then be in re- be reimbursed by the city. With the new grant, we don't have to wait for the city to have money from impact fees for reimbursement. The city will take care of the installation and payment, and the city will be able to install the trail from Camden Street to the school all at one time. In summary, even if we use this grant to fund other infrastructure, the city would still be paying for the trail through impact fees per the agreement about the Mullen Build Project. For Trail A that was proposed through the park, staff recommend removing the condition of approval that requires its installation. This is because city plans have changed, and now the trail is proposed to be in a different location outside of the subdivision. The old routing of the trail was not the most direct path for kids to get from development to the west to Hellgate Elementary School. The new plans show the trail south of the subdivision. Kids in the West End Home Subdivision will still have a safe route along the trail on Flynn Lane, and the superintendent of Hellgate Elementary School provided agency comment and stated the new trail route looks more beneficial. Condition of approval requires the subdivider to install streetlights on England Boulevard and Doherty Drive, which are collector streets. The condition also required the creation of a special improvement lighting district. Since then, Public Works and Mobility has stopped creating new lighting districts. Staff recommend amending the condition of approval to no longer require, uh, creation of a lighting district. The subdivider would still be required to install street lighting. A condition of approval requires the Swiptupcane Area Special Transportation Impact Fee to be paid all prior to Phase One. Staff recommend amending the condition to require payment prior to approval of each building permit, because this is typical for impact fees. The impacts to transportation happen when each unit is built, not when the subdivision is platted. At Land Use and Planning Committee, council asked if the impact fees accounted for inflation. The answer is no. The impact fee was approved in March 2021 with set fee amounts based on the type of construction and square feet. However, the resolution states that the transportation special impact fee shall be reviewed on an annual basis per Missoula Municipal Code, uh, Sections 157070 and 156670. The fee is only two years into the payback period, and there has not been an increase. However, we may see a request in the coming years. A different condition of approval requires the water and sewer special development fee to be paid prior to Phase One final plat approval. Public Works and Mobility staff have been negotiating with the developer to have the fee split between Phase One and Phase Two. This negotiation would be established by amending the existing right-of-way agreement, which would go in front of city council for approval. Staff recommend amending the condition of approval to allow for the fee to be split between two phases if approved through agreement. Last, the road standards for this area require the boulevards to contain bioswells. A bioswell is a light imprint stormwater infrastructure feature that allows for pretreatment of stormwater through vegetation. The Mullen Build Grant installed some of the England Boulevard infrastructure. Earlier, I mentioned the roadway is already built. Secondary improvements like sidewalks are the responsibility of the subdivider. When the build grant was installing the roadway, they also installed the bioswell infrastructure. Staff recommend amending the applicable condition of approval to require installation of bioswell landscaping rather than the bioswell infrastructure, since it's already there. Oh, here we go. Phase Development Review has a 30-day review deadline and cannot be denied. City council can adopt staff's recommended changes. Only some of the recommended changes or add new ones based on new information. Staff recommends city council approve the Phase Development Review of West End Home Subdivision Phase One, located west of Flynn Lane and north of Hellgate Elementary School, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval as amended by city council through Phase Development Review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trippard. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing if anyone wants to comment on the proposal. Seeing none, and none online. I'll close the public hearing. We will take action on this tonight. Um, are there questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move approval of the Phase Development Review of the West End Home Subdivision Phase One, located west of Flynn Lane and north of Hellgate Elementary School, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval as amended by city council through Phase Development Review.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Raybain, we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the phased development review. Vissera.
Yes.
Harlino.
Yes.
Tontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Visika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 12 eyes, and it passes unanimously.
And the motion's approved. Uh, we have no items of committee reports, under committee reports, nor do we have any items of new business. I'll pass on communications from the mayor tonight, and we'll start, uh, this week with Ms. Farmer for general comments of council members.
I can pass.
Savage?
I'll pass, thank you.
Ms. Vissera?
Um, I just want to echo the comments about, um, voting, so I would encourage everyone to please, um, submit your ballots tomorrow. Um, your vote does matter. Um, and I also want to say that, um, tomorrow, Missoula will be electing new council members, but also a new mayor. And, um, I just want to express my gratitude to Mayor Hess. Um, I think whether you agreed with, uh, Mayor Hess or not, um, whether you like him or not, I think one thing is for certain, and that is that it takes a lot of courage, and it takes a lot of commitment and dedication to lead a city. And I really appreciate all the work that you have done, and, um, my gratitude.
Thank you for that. Mr. Tontos?
Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you very much. That was a very smooth transition. Uh, I, I personally appreciated that very much. Um, again, lucky me, I got to spend, uh, quite a bit of time today with my two-year-old grandson, and, uh, it makes me realize how important it is that we as parents spend great time with our kids, because you will see the end result as they get a little bit older.
Ms. Jones?
Um, I'll thank you in the future. That's not on tonight's list. I have something else I want to talk about, but duly noted. Um, I, uh, there, there's a lot going on in the Middle East right now, and I wanted to just briefly address that. I had the opportunity to attend the Interfaith Peace Vigil at the University of Montana yesterday. Um, it was addressing the situation in the Middle East, and I just wanted to first of all note that there were messages and prayers that I thought were touching and thoughtful, and all of them calling for resolution in some form or fashion and for peace. Um, I think the current conflict in the Middle East is just brutal. It has the potential to get much worse, and calling for peace really resonated, I think, with everyone in the room. And I do think it impacts us here in Missoula. Um, there have been some peaceful demonstrations on all sides of the issue. Um, there have also been some white supremacists who have come to demonstrate in Missoula, and I just wanted to call out that I think their message often is grounded in hate speech, and I don't think hate speech has a place in Missoula.
Mayor, who will be elected tomorrow. So, um, thank you for the tremendous amount of work and stress and sleepless nights that you have given to all of us and to this community that you love, that is your home. Um, and we are in your debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl?
Thanks, um, I still plan on talking to you a lot. And, uh, I'm going to be asking you a lot of questions because you have a depth of knowledge about, uh, this city and about, uh, local government that, um, is going to be sorely missed, so I'm just going to call you a lot. I want to add, um, that there are, to the election piece, thank you, there are a lot of places you can drop off the ballot. The Election Center, which is, uh, 140 North Russell, the Missoula Public Library, Hellgate Elementary, um, the former Cold Springs School, CS Porter Middle School, the Fairgrounds, and De Smet School. So, um, just know that there are a lot of places to drop them off, and you need to drop them off, um, at this point. They need to be dropped off. I think, um, it's 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Uh, Transform Brooks, the, uh, Steering Committee, uh, has a, an open house that will be at the Fairgrounds on November 16th from five, it starts at 5:30, I think it goes until 7:30. I'm going to check that really quickly. Um, it, there's no formal presentation, but you can come and you can look at what they're doing. You can make comments, um, they are, they are soliciting feedback. I strongly, I'm, I'm on that committee. Um, I strongly, uh, suggest that any council that's able to go, goes. I'll try to give you updates if you're not able to. And, um, please, you know, it's, it's in part of the Midtown Master Plan. It's really important to Ward Four, and, um, it has, it has the possibility, this project over the years, of being really, uh, a fabulous thing for the community and for, um, that area of town specifically.
Thank you. Mr. Harlino?
Yeah, I did just want to quickly address the, um, I went to, uh, protest this weekend in town where we all marched over to John Tester, our senator's office, and asked him to, um, call for a ceasefire and, uh, stop using our taxpayer money to, uh, bomb children in Palestine. And, um, there was about 200 of us that went to his office to, to demand a ceasefire and to stop using our tax money to, um, to bomb innocent children. And, um, I just think it's important that we all do what we can with our power to, to speak up and ask our representatives, especially the ones that, that would know better, to stop using our tax money to, um, to kill innocent people overseas in Palestine. And, um, if John Tester's staff is listening, I would ask you all to encourage them to join the other members of Congress who are ca- calling for peace and calling for a ceasefire. And I asked John Tester to stop voting to use our tax money to bomb innocent children.
Ms. West?
So I just wanted to congratulate the Missoula FFA team. They went to Nationals this last week. Um, they were there from the first through the fourth. Um, we have lots of students that did very well, and I just wanted to specifically call out the forestry team, which got silver, and the meats team, which also got silver, and their advisors who put lots of hours into these kids, which are Ms. Rothie, Ms. Arnott, and Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, two quick things. First, I'd just like to, um, congratulate the Hellgate Girls Soccer Team on taking second in state. Um, tremendous season. I think it might be the best they've ever done. I'm looking to our resident Hellgate expert, Ms. Cheryl, nodding her head. Uh, so congratulations to them, and also congratulations to Lady Grizz Women Soccer, who didn't quite have their tournament go as they had hoped, but, uh, they are a tremendous presence in the community, and they have a great coach that I've been lucky enough to get to know a little bit. Um, and then the second thing is I would just echo many folks' comments, um, on how important it is to vote, whether you are supporting people around this horseshoe or other people. I think I speak for everyone that, you know, democracy works better when people participate. So we would like to see, uh, people show up and take part in that process and, you know, let their voice be heard, because that's one of the great privileges of being a resident of this great country. And, um, you know, with that, I just hope everybody has a good evening and a good election day tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jordan?
Pass, thanks.
And Ms. Visika?
Yeah, um, I, I want to take a different route here. Uh, when I pointed out that my two-year-old owes over $100,000 in debt last meeting, um, a colleague said that some debt is a good thing. And I forgot to mention that the following, or that, um, currently, uh, my two-year-old owes over $100,000 in debt to, um, different entities in different, um, yeah, different countries around the world. And so currently, the numbers are, balanced against the value of his commercial assets, the co- the federal government, the American federal government, had a combined total of $135.5 trillion in debts, liabilities, and unfunded obligations at the close of its 2022 fiscal year. This shortfall equates to over $400,000 for every person living in the U.S., over a million dollars for every household in the U.S., 5.3 times annual U.S. economic output, at 27 times annual federal revenues, and 94% of the combined net worth of all U.S. households and nonprofit organizations, including all assets and savings, real estate, corporate stocks, private businesses, and consumer durable goods such as automobiles and furniture. And I think that it's sad that some, if not most, of my colleagues believe that those statistics are a good thing. So I don't think that having that amount of debt in the, uh, federal level and the local level is a good thing. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Visika. Uh, we have no additional items on our agenda. We have no miscellaneous communications reports or announcements. So with that, I thank you all for attending. Thank you, council members, for your service, and we'll be adjourned.